Twenty-three. And may we please have a roll call. Mr. Rich?
Yes, Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Weems?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
And Ms. Heinrich?
Here.
I myself am here. Dr. Blau?
I am also here.
Fantastic. Mr. Walker is absent today. You do have a quorum.
Fantastic. Uh, will you be willing to lead us in the pledge? Will you be willing to lead us in the pledge?
Oh, you would like for me?
Yes, 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 yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to what is said, one nation under God, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get you.
I'm sorry. Okay, uh, do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda? Yes, Mr. Rich?
I move that we approve today's agenda as presented.
Support. Motion by Mr. Rich, supported by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have a report from the Student Roundtable President.
And unfortunately, our Student Roundtable President could not be here this evening, but I know that Board Member Heinrich and I were at our first Student Roundtable meeting, so maybe if it's permissible, we can give an update.
Absolutely.
So we were very excited to welcome our young people back. We have about thirty students from all three of our high schools who meet every month with me, with Mr. Smith, the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We have Board Trustee Heinrich, who's with us, as well as our building principals. And they talk about initiatives that the students want to kind of work on. If you recall from last year, they had come to the point where they were preparing a career fair for their fellow students. And so they really wanted to do outreach for all of the students in the school year so they could really explore careers, internships, apprenticeships. And so that is top of mind for our young people. So they are really excited about bringing that to fruition this year. And then they actually did some brainstorming and some team building for a second goal that they're still throwing around, some different ideas. Some of the ideas were self-care, as well as defining success and achievement for yourself and what that takes to move forward, as well as some other ideas about mentorship. It was very touching that they talked about that they wished they had a connection to high school students when they were in middle school. And so they may want to leave a legacy for other students to develop a mentorship program with our middle school folks. So I actually asked the ninth grade members in the group to raise their hand and talk about what it would mean to them if they could build this legacy. And so they were very excited about contributing. And we complimented them on the fact that their voices are being raised. And we're listening to them and taking what they give us and putting it into action. Case in point, at both of our high schools, Farmington and at North Farmington, we now have IST at North and FLEX at Farmington. It came out of student conversations about how to enhance that. And actually, this morning, my cabinet and I were on a building visit at Farmington High School. We spent about two hours at Farmington and really experienced the entirety of this FLEX period. We were at North Farmington last week and saw similar IST. So we complimented the students on bringing their ideas to us so we can bring it to life. So I don't know, Mrs. Heinrich, if you want to share your observations of that first meeting?
Um, yeah, I'm just really impressed with just a nice group of young people and just how, I guess, how thoughtful and caring they are. And just, you know, the Career Fair is really a big thing for them. And so I know they wanted to speak to the community through the Board of Education, community members, you know, share your, once they set a date, they're going to be asking for people to share their expertise in their careers. And so that's a wonderful way to get involved. But then for their secondary thing, I was really impressed with the ideas that they came up with. And one of them, uh, community outreach. You know, one of the groups, they wanted to get to know not only members within the schools and the school district, but within the community. And some of the ideas were to help senior citizens with social media, they wanted to teach preschoolers how to paint. I mean, you know, they're just talking about going out into the community and being volunteer system. Yeah, the buddy system between middle and high school students was, you know, really one of their great things. So, yes, mental health. They're gonna have a joint meeting with the IDEA, which is...
It's our youth version of our diversity, equity, and inclusion.
So a joint meeting with them to align awareness and support the work that they do also. So really nice, nice group of young people. And they're also going to be at the Senior Adult Breakfast Thursday, working as volunteers. And they're, so they signed up for that. And they're just going to be placed at a table with community members, just so that they can get an experience to get to know people in the community and share what's going on with the schools. So it's a real privilege to see these kids work together.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that review and update. Next, items from the President. First, I'd like to state that we thank you for your interest in attending or viewing our FPS Board of Education meetings. The Open Meetings Act requires that all meetings of our board be held in public. As a result, our board meetings are the only place and time that we, as a full board, can legally work together on district matters. While these board meetings are held in public for the purpose of full transparency, they are not public meetings. While you are welcome to attend our board meetings in person or watch from elsewhere virtually, we must take the time needed to address, discuss, and hear presentations on all matters of importance to our work for the district. We also, as a board, together with our superintendent, have agreed to abide by the following standards of behavior when interacting with one another, both during our board meetings and elsewhere, even when, and in some cases, especially when, we disagree with one another's points of view. And they are: listen actively, no sidebars, respect people and ideas, presume positive intent, use electronic devices respectfully and stay engaged, listen to learn, not to defend, be brave, and be vulnerable. We thank our community members for abiding by these standards of behavior as well. I would like to acknowledge that our board sends out our deepest heartfelt wish for peace in the Middle East, for all of those members of our community who have connections to that region. We are hopeful that humanitarian aid will get to everyone who is in need as quickly as possible and that there will be a resolution soon that honors all of the stakeholders involved. And our condolences to those who are experiencing grief and loss during this time, and may peace come quickly to the region. Coming up soon, Friday, November 3rd, we will be having our toast to education, the Education Foundation. And it's a wonderful evening of wine and craft beer tasting, lots of delicious food from Bush's and from the culinary kitchens of OCC and others. There are phenomenal prizes and gift baskets that will be raffled off. It's really a delightful evening. It will be from seven till nine-thirty at the Meridian on Harpety Road in Farmington Hills. You can find out about it on our website and on the Farmington Education Foundation website. And we look forward to having your support at this wonderful event. Not only is it a fabulous fundraiser for programs and scholarships for our students and teachers here, it is also a delightful evening. So we hope that you will join us. Next, we have correspondence from our students. Mr. Rich?
Thank you. The board has received various communications, such as an article on literacy and to parent homes. Additionally, the board has received comments on topics related to literacy and behavior, suggestions for public comments, school residency, a Head Start grant application, and a FOIA request. The board acknowledges communications and responds when appropriate. A list of correspondence can be found in the board packet, accessible on the Farmington Public Schools website.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Next, we have our legislative update. Mr. Rich?
Thank you. So just one main aspect I wanted to touch on. So last week, the State Senate approved and passed over to the House Senate Bill 395, which amends Michigan's teacher evaluation system. There are a bunch of different changes happening with this, including not just teacher, but also administrator evaluation law. This looks at both changing the rating levels, how many there are, what effectiveness is looked at, as well as due process procedures for reviews of teachers and administrators rated as needing support, which is a new rating system. So that is what we are currently looking at at the state level. At the federal level, we are still without a Speaker of the House, so no legislation is being discussed there. We're three weeks in there, and I believe the most recent speaker designate lasted for forty-five minutes before withdrawing from the speaker room. So it's very much up in the air as to what's happening at that level.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. I'd like to add that yesterday, I was in Lansing, meeting with the MEA President, Chandra Metafary, and we spoke at length about this legislation that you just described, Mr. Rich. It would also open up new options for us as teachers and as a district in terms of the tools that we utilize to assess, track, and report student growth from year to year, which is very, very exciting. So fingers crossed that this legislation will pass the House. Thank you again, Mr. Rich. Moving on to our district updates. Dr. Delgado?
Thank you, Dr. Blau, and good evening, everyone. So it is a great time to be in school, in public school, and it's a great time to be in Farmington Public Schools. So October, end of October, is really where we pick up all of our end-of kind of marking period preparations, as well as our fantastic choirs, band concerts. There's actually a concert this evening as we speak. I had the pleasure last week to go to the choir concert at Farmington High School, as well as East Middle School, who did their take on The Brothers Grimm. And so we have all of those to look forward to, musicals, plays, wonderful concerts, wonderful presentations, as we wrap up kind of our fall season. Additionally, instructionally, in October, we begin our cabinet-plus walkthrough. So I take my entire cabinet team, and we go to every single school in the district, every classroom in the district, and we visit all of our students, so our over nine thousand students. And we get to really interact with all of our teachers and our students and see the fruits of everyone's labor. So we're seeing firsthand the results of our K-2 foundational skills program across all of our elementary schools, and all of the work that our middle schools and high schools are putting in on authentic tasks, real-world learning, project-based learning, application of knowledge. We're seeing that classroom after classroom. So I want to thank all of our dedicated staff members for supporting these initiatives and really bringing them to life. As I mentioned earlier, our team was at Farmington High School this morning for over two hours and interacted with hundreds of kids. They were able to not only articulate what they were learning, but why it was important. What we saw was a real natural infusion of technology in very purposeful ways, one-on-one connectivity, as well as collaborative learning with their peers, and really skilled facilitation by our teachers. And so it's just such an honor to walk our hallways. And so again, over the last couple of weeks, I think we've been in about eight schools, thousands of kids, hundreds of classrooms, and the kids are doing well. The morale in the buildings are high. We have happy kids, they're engaged, and they're really proud to be in Farmington Public Schools. Had the honor to bring many of our board members on their first board instructional visit in my three years here. And so thank you to Lanigan Elementary and to Mrs. Lowe, who welcomed us into her classroom to see the actual students performing a lesson in the K-12 foundational skills block. I know Board Trustee Smith was there, Ms. Fox, Ms. Weems, Ms. Heinrich, Mr. Walker, interacting with the kids. I saw Ms. Weems plop down on a beanbag and got a big hug from a little girl, and then read her a book, and Ms. Fox and Ms. Smith. I mean, everyone was just interacting. And you can see not only the joy in their faces, but their interaction. And most importantly, what the kids don't know is we see this incredible quality instruction that we're really moving as the initiatives that we have here in our building. So it's a good place to be, and it's a good time to be in schools. One of the other things is, we mentioned the Student Roundtable. And so with Mr. Smith, our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator, we also checked in on our kids. We wanted to make sure that they were doing okay. And as we visit these buildings, especially at the middle and the high school level, we know that they too are touched by this global conflict, as well as other situations that happen in our schools. And so one of the questions we asked our young people at the roundtable was, how are you doing and how are you taking care of each other? How is the impact, the global impact affecting you? We know that our community is such a beautifully diverse community, and it creates a beautifully important responsibility for us to really look after all of our children, knowing that we're disproportionately impacted by the events currently going on in the Middle East. And so the students are fine, they're doing well. We, I want to really comment or applaud our counselors, our social workers, our restorative practices facilitators, our equity leads, who are really working to support students, those who need that extra support, and not only the students, but extension to their families as well. So our kids are doing well. Our job in the public schools is to provide a safe, a physically and intellectually safe environment. And with partnership with our law enforcement, we're doing that on the physical side. And with our teachers and our wonderful ancillary staff, we're doing that on the intellectually, intellectual and social emotional side. So we're in a good place right now, and our kids are, our kids are doing well, and it's just a joy to get in the classroom. So I couldn't be more excited for this fall and the things that are left to come. And that's my update.
Thank you, Dr. Delgado. Next, we have our reports from board committees. We have Finance and Facilities. These names?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, the Finance and Facilities Committee met twice since our last meeting on October 17th. We met to review the financial audit, the summer tax collection, and also had a discussion about the Lewis Shulman Administrative Building down the road.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The Finance Committee met on October 17th. The first matter that we discussed was the annual audit. Was very pleased to learn that, again, the district had a clean audit opinion and further excels yet again in being recognized as award-winning in pulling together that comprehensive audit. Thank you. Someone inform me. I won't steal their report because they are here today to give us that report, and I appreciate that very much. Also appreciate the Business Office, who continues to do just really great work in this area. I was very happy to see that there was an increase in enrollment in the past year and that that's being projected for next year as well. The committee had several questions about that and trends, so we should look to receive more information as we prepare our budget for next year, but that all looked promising. I was also pretty stunned to hear that that is not the trend across Michigan. So our auditors are, we're fortunate enough to have auditors that work with lots of different school districts. Plant Moran is a very large public accounting firm, and we're very grateful to have all of their insights, wisdom, and recommendations. But that was one of the things that struck me, was that while the rest of the state are seeing declines, that we're starting to reverse that trend. I was also interested in having a discussion about the fund balance. I brought this up a couple of times, and we should add that to an agenda item, and I mentioned that in our last Finance Committee meeting. Years ago, when the board changed its policy or updated its policy to change the targeted funding, change the targeted fund balance percentage, that was in response to some recommendations that we received from our auditors, and also in response to what national trends were, and also what recommendations are from nationally. We did make some adjustments to our fund balance at the time. We were not as financially healthy as I feel like we are now. We talked about considering a future change. I'm not sure whether this board is ready for that or not, but I thought I would continue to bring it up. The recommendations for fund balance are really around having at least two months' worth of operating expenses on hand. And the reason for doing that is because schools generally only receive funding twice a year. And if they don't receive enough funding at a particular time, then they're forced to borrow. And no one wants to borrow money, especially in this environment with the interest rates the way that they are. And so we're lucky that we don't have to borrow, where other schools that don't have as healthy a fund balance do. So that was that discussion. We also talked about the review of the public hearing on summer tax collection, which will be up today. This is not anything unusual, it's just acknowledging that we'd like to continue our practice of collecting half of the property taxes in the summer and half in the fall. I would not be a proponent of changing that. That would be pretty devastating for families to have to have that big of a difference. So the recommendation is to continue to do what we've been doing. And then finally, we discussed the Shulman Administrative Building. There was a discussion on a proposal to convert that building to a partially-conditioned storage area. So the district has a lot of furniture and other things that are currently being stored, and it would be helpful to have a dedicated space for that. So the proposal is to consider leveraging that building for those needs. And we all recall that there was a study done previously to renovate that building rather than this one, ultimately decided to do this one and not that building because of the structural needs that would have had to have been done to that building to bring it up to code with elevators. It's pretty oddly shaped and configured to begin with. The committee requested a comparative cost analysis of the current administrative building to function as an office building with public access, the existing administrative building converting to a storage space, and the old Visions building to function as an administrative space. So we're just trying to understand what the cost implications are of various alternatives, and wanted to make sure that we were comprehensively considering all costs and not sort of, you know, just kind of chunking it off in pieces. We met separately again on October 20th to talk through the review of Bid Package 11, which is mostly Warner and Farmington Early Childhood Center and Farmington Central High School. In total, again, I won't go over that in detail because there's a presentation on that today, but there was very robust committee conversation on that one, some very good questions about what's going on now that wasn't covered in a previous sort of bid package with respect to those schools, particularly around Farmington Early Childhood, which very recently got some pretty comprehensive updates. And so we all got really good answers to all of those questions. Warner Middle School is a little higher on the pricing because some of the replacement equipment is pretty difficultly located and requires actually some, I think, like, to be accessed through the roof instead of from the inside up. We have to go from the outside in, which is a little complicated, but that's driving up some of the costs. What was helpful is that over the years, through the Business Office, some very good planning, some very good competitive bids that we've received over the years, we've generated a lot of savings. And the Business Office has also been able to generate lots of earned interest. So overall, we're about $1.4 million to the good on all of the work that's been done. So even though this is slightly over, we can, we're not over in total around all of the bond costs. In fact, we're projecting that we'll still have some excess, and as a Finance Committee, we'll need to make some recommendations to bring to the full board about what we do with that excess and how we move forward. So there are some alternates being considered here, very robust conversation about why those alternates are being suggested, especially since we're over. And again, the committee got some really good answers to all of their questions. That was just comprehensive, but I know that some of this is, requires a vote either today or in the future, and this is a lot of money. So we had a lot of good conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the committee for the comments. Yes, Ms.?
So Ms. Weems, you are the chair of that committee, correct?
Correct.
And who else is on that committee with you?
Ms. Fox and Ms. Heinrich.
Okay.
And both were in attendance for both of those meetings.
Perfect, because I have no clue of who sits on what committee, so I appreciate that.
It's on our website. It's on our website.
But I'm not a community member, I'm a board member, so I'm just asking, Ms.?
Okay.
Thank you.
Fine, Ms.? All righty. That is all for our board committee reports. Let's move on to our discussion items. First, we have our review of the annual audit report. Dr. Delgado, would you like to introduce?
Oh, I see her there. Yes, our wonderful...
Yeah, barely.
Wonderful Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Mrs. Jennifer Kaminsky.
All right. Good evening. So we are pleased to present the financial report for June 30th, 2023, this evening. So included in your board packet was the, or is, the annual comprehensive financial report. So a very robust introductory section, talking about the programs in the community, our financial section, as well as lots of statistical information in the back. We also have the federal awards report, which contains all of our federal dollars received and spent during the year, and then the report to the Board of Education. So this evening, we have two individuals from Plant Moran. We have Donna Hansen and Jenny Colbo, who will be presenting the audit results, and they have a graph presentation for you this evening. So I will turn it over to Donna. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. Thank you, the Board of Education, for having us here tonight and some time on your agenda to report out on the results of the audit. As Ms. Weems had mentioned, we did cover these items at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting and had a great discussion regarding the draft financial statements. After that meeting, we did finalize those financial statements, and that's what you had in your board packet. Let me move this. Do I move down? Okay, I'm just gonna do that. I'm happy to report that we have issued an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the highest form of assurance that we can provide that the district's financial statements are free of material misstatement, are fairly presented in accordance to the accounting rules, and can be relied upon. We have also issued an unmodified opinion on the federal programs report, the grants, the federal program grants the district receives. There were two major programs that were tested in fiscal year '23. That would be the Child Nutrition Cluster Grant Program, as well as the ESF funds. And those are detailed in that smaller report that Ms. Kaminsky just mentioned. We had encountered no findings or question costs related to that compliance and numbers audit that those grant dollars received. We did want to comment on the Uniform Budget Act. The district has a record of sound processes and procedures in place surrounding the budget process. Then it has a record of no violations, and the Board of Education adopts that budget each year, and the district cannot overspend the budget that has been adopted and amended. And we see no violations and report good processes. Also, the next two items on the slide, wanted to mention because they are something to take note of this year in the audit. The first one, again, is the COVID funding. So those ESF dollars that are recognized in revenue this year. Just a reminder, I know you hear this often about the fiscal cliff coming with the pandemic dollars. Those dollars need to be spent fully, and we have a graph included that details this. Those grant dollars need to be spent by September 2024, so about a year out still to continue spending those dollars. But after that point, there's no further support. So strategic planning and diligence around what those dollars pay for have been closely monitored by the district. The other item to note, included in the financial statements this year, is the additional restricted retirement funding. As a reminder, for fiscal year '23, the state of Michigan, through legislation, added a billion dollars to the MIPSers pension program. The way they deployed those dollars was to allocate that out to the districts as revenue, and then the districts are required to pay that into the retirement system. So as a result of that, revenues, for Farmington in particular, are higher by seven... So as a result of that, revenues for Farmington in particular are higher by $7.5 million, and expenditures are higher by $7.5 million. And it's something to note. I continue to say, this will be a year all districts in the state will have a little asterisk next to it, because that's something to note, because it's not true revenue that the district could spend on anything. It was an in and an out in, in the financial reporting. And then finally, congratulations, the district was awarded for 2022 the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials. As, as, as Ms. Kaminsky had held up, the financial statements the district pulls together are very comprehensive, and those are submitted for award recognition, and you did receive that. And that certificate for 2022's financial statements for last year is included in your financial statements this year. The next two slides just touch briefly on the required end of audit communication to the Board of Education. That's a separate letter to the board, the board received. And it's important letter because it does define essentially the responsibilities we have as the district's auditors, and also the responsibilities of management. The financial statements are the responsibility of the district, and our responsibility is to render an opinion on the fairness and accuracy of the financial statements. And again, an unmodified opinion is, is a clean opinion. We also ensure that the district is recording the accounting activity in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and in the United States of America, and in compliance with all of those accounting standards. Also included in those communications are other matters that we annually will report to the Board of Education. We encountered no difficulties in performing the audit. The district and the business office was well-prepared for the audit, and we had no disagreements with management, no adjustments or uncorrected adjustments, and no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And this really speaks to the internal control processes and procedures the district has in place. So good news. I'm going to turn it over to Jenny, and she is going to cover the detail of the numbers.
All right. Thank you, Donna. So this first slide here is looking at that COVID-19 relief funding that the district has received since inception. So the district has been awarded $21.2 million, and as of June 30th, 2023, has expended $14.6 million. So that leaves $6.6 million left to be spent through September 2024, as Donna mentioned. The district does have a strategic plan in place on how to, to spend those remaining dollars. And then once again, just another reminder that this is the, the one-time funding source. The next few slides are going to focus on the general fund, since that is the main operating fund of the district. This slide here is looking at the general fund revenue and other sources. As of June 30th, 2023, there was $165.6 million of revenue in the general fund. The largest source depicted here in orange is from the state at 58%. A local at 29% includes your property tax revenue. Inter-district and others at 7%, and then federal revenue at 6%. And that is where those additional COVID-19 federal funds are. So what is depicted here is how dependent the district is on that state funding. And if you were to compare this slide to the prior year slide, you will see, like Donna mentioned, the general fund revenue did increase this year, and increased by about $21.5 million. The main reason for that increase was that one-time payment to the retirement system of $7.5 million that the district had to pay right back, as well as an increase in the per pupil foundation allowance of about $490, and we'll see that here in a few slides. This next slide is looking at the general fund revenue, but focusing on what the foundation allowance provides. So 60% of the revenue in the general fund is the foundation allowance shown here in orange, and that is your unrestricted state aid as well as the property taxes. And then 26% is state and local, and that's shown in teal here. And this is now where your state categoricals are. So comparing this slide to your previous slide, you would see the shift from the local to the foundation allowance, because that is now where your property taxes are included. This slide here is looking at the foundation allowance history of the per pupil funding for the district. As I previously mentioned, your 2022 foundation allowance did increase to be $11,026 per pupil. As you can see here, with that dotted line going across, up until last year, the district had not yet recovered from those 2009 funding cuts. So it's taken 14 years for the district to get back to the level of funding that it was at in 2009. And then this is the first year that the district has seen that increase of about The next slide here is looking at the cumulative rate of inflation and comparing it to the per pupil funding. So the top line here is shown is the rate of inflation, and then the bottom line is the per pupil funding amount. So as you can see with that big difference between those two lines, the district has not kept pace with inflation on a per pupil basis. And as you can see, that, that difference between those two lines does continue to grow. If you're thinking about this on a dollar basis, the current year comparison to inflation is approximately $3,200 per pupil. And looking at it on a cumulative basis over time, that funding gap between inflation and the per pupil funding is closer to $29.5 million. This next slide here is looking at the blended student population of the district. It shows the history, which as you can see, there has been a decline of the district, but this has been seen across the state that the student count has decreased. There's many factors that have played into this decrease, given the birth rates in, in the county, the aging population, people having kids later in life, and less kids as well in life. As Ms. Wiems previously mentioned, you will see here, the district did increase slightly for 2023, and there's 9,019 students, or an increase of 64 students. And as Ms. Wiems did previously mention, this is one of the very few districts where we are seeing that increase in students for the year. The next few slides here are going to focus on the general fund expenditures. Total expenditures in the general fund were $160.2 million. As you would expect in the learning organization, your largest expense in the general fund is instruction at 59%, and those are the actual dollars being spent in the classroom. And that is followed by support services at 36%.
Can we go back to number, page 10? What is the bar that is brown? What does that mean?
Yep. So in 2021, the pupil count was just counted differently due to, that was the year that students were coming back into session after COVID. So the, the count in 2021 was slightly, was slightly different. Yeah, the super blend is what it's called. And there's a little asterisk there, but it correlates to 2021.
Could you explain a little bit more about what the super blend represents?
Yeah, so that was a provision that was put in place at the state to help alleviate districts from having to take a significant funding count because students were not coming back to school necessarily at that point in time. So the, the super blend actually counted more from the previous year and balanced that out with the current year with less. So it kind of was a blended count twice in order to retain the count so that the per pupil funding wouldn't drop. Right. And that is something that will continue to have an asterisk on it because it was a very unique circumstance, as we know that year in particular.
Right.
Good question.
So that it's not, it's not that we had exactly the same number of students, it's just there was a construct created by the state to assist districts who did experience a decrease in number of.
Yeah, you can say a smoothing.
Right, a smoothing, yes.
A smoothing. And as you can see, in 2022, that provision was not continued. And so what do we see as a result? That, that deeper drop. You would have seen that in 2021, had it not been for the super blend.
Right, right, right. Thank you.
You mentioned that there's a slight increase in 2023. I don't know if this question is for you or Ms. Wiems, or even Dr. Delgado could help us with this. With the, and excuse me, I'm battling the flu. With this increase, does that include school of choice students? And if it does, does that mean that they will, that the trend will continue? Or is this just residents that made that?
I can answer that question. So we are, continue to be a destination district. We have about 200 applicants each year for schools of choice. So schools of choice students always are included in your total population count. And so that, looking back at the history of our district, it's been around 200 students per year.
This is, that's helpful. Thank you. Excuse me.
This one, okay. So this slide here is taking a look at the general fund expenditures, the same expenditures that we were looking at previously, but looking at it by object, or that's where the dollars are being spent. And as you would expect, in an organization of people, your largest component or expenditure would be salaries and benefits at 83%. That represents all staff in the district. Staff and benefits at 83% is very comparable to what we see at other school districts. That's always approximately around 80%. This slide here is breaking down that salaries and benefits that were, were shown on the previous slide. As you can see here, salaries are the largest portion that make up the salaries and benefits number, but what may be surprising is that it's only 56% of this total expense. 20% represents FICA retirement, 9% is insurance, 10% is the retirement money that the district is receiving and has to turn around and pay right back into the pension system. And then additionally, this year, 5% of that was that one-time payment that was received that was previously mentioned. Yes?
I remember asking this question years ago. I just don't remember what the answer was. Why does the state give us $12 million and then require us to send it right back? Why not just keep it?
And put it in themselves?
Yes.
I think there are legal implications and credit that districts receive and how they deploy it, but I think that was a common question when they started this mechanism of filtering that out to districts and, and having districts reflect that in their books and records as benefits. Essentially, it's probably legal implications and probably political implications.
Because it, it has the impact of making it appear as if the district is receiving more money year over year over year, when it's really net neutral. If, yeah, it's great that I got 12 million this year and 10 million last year, but both the 10 and the 12 have to go back to the state.
Correct. And it's beyond the normal formula funding. So it's, it's funding to target directly the unfunded liability of the, the pension plan. But yes, I, I think, you know, you do see that when, when reports are, are provided showing how much does the state spend in public education funding. This is included in that, and it's included in all of the district's numbers in the state. And so that is, you know, considered additional funding, although you have no ability to spend it on things that you would like. Okay?
Thank you.
Here we're looking at, taking a closer look at the retirement expense of the district. So in 2023, retirement expense was $33.5 million. Or another way to think about this is for every dollar spent on salaries, 45 cents of that went into the MIPSers retirement system. So for every dollar of payroll, it really did cost the district $1.45. 28% of that is the, covered by the district, and then the rest was recovered by the state. As depicted here, you can see there has been a significant increase over the past several years, and it is expected to continue to increase over the next few years as well.
And this doesn't include the?
Yeah, and this does not include that one-time payment that we were speaking about that is not reflected here in these retirement numbers. Focusing now on the general fund fund balance. Ms. Wiems did allude to this before, that there was some discussion about the district's fund balance at our meeting. So here you can see the total fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was about 23%, of which about 6% of that has been assigned or committed already for other uses. So the district's unassigned fund balance is 17.5%. Compared to the state average, it's important to note that the state average is as of June 30th, 2022. That is 20.3%. With that additional COVID funding, we have been seeing the increase of fund balance across the state. But now that that mo- fun, that funding has been mostly spent, we're expecting to see that continue to decrease. The district has been able to utilize that COVID funding. One way to think about it is if you did not receive it this year, you would have had a break even in the general fund versus adding to your fund balance this year due to that one-time funding.
And speaking of funding.
Continuing to go on, the importance of fund balance, which was alluded to before. It allows you not to have to borrow. Average monthly payroll of the district is $9.6 million. So if you were, do not have that fund balance, and you do not have the proper funding, you would have to borrow in order to meet payroll. Another is your federal expenditures are on a reimbursement basis, meaning you have to spend and expend those dollars before you actually receive them as well. MSBO's recommendation is 15%. GFOA's recommendation is 16 point, 16 to 17%. And the district's board-approved fund balance target right now is 10 to 15%. Once again, just want to thank Ms. Kaminsky and the entire business office. As you can tell from these results, it was another successful audit, and we'd be happy to take any other questions that you may have.
Yes.
It's really not a question. It's just a thank you for the work that you put into this. I don't do dollars and cents, and I'm glad you were able to break it down in layman's terms so that we can all, those that are not, the CPAs on the board who knows the money and the finance part, for those that don't know and understand, this was an easy way for me to understand, get a full depth of getting into the meat of it all. Thank you, really appreciate you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for this thorough report.
Thank you for having us. Have a nice evening.
Next, we are moving on to the public hearing on summer tax collection, the resolution.
We do. Mrs. Kaminsky's rejoined us at the podium.
All right. So just to provide a little bit of background, annually, I brought this resolution to you for your approval. And Farmington has always levied 50% of their taxes in the summer and then 50% in the winter. And that is what we're going to recommend continuing to move forward with. However, last year, at the meeting that I brought this resolution to, our bond counsel was here, and he let me know that we don't need to bring this annually. We can set a resolution in place and have it in place to continue until the board revokes it. So this resolution then needed to have a public hearing, so that's why it's deemed a public hearing of the summer tax collection resolution. And essentially, we are recommending that we continue with that 50% levy in the summer and 50% in the winter. So again, the other option would be levying the entire amount 100% in the summer. Obviously, that has financial impacts on homeowners and all taxpayers within the community, and is not something that we need to do at this point, and have not considered it in the past as well. So in order to make the process more efficient, I'm asking for approval of this resolution, which would document 50% in the summer, 50% in the winter, until revoked by the Board of Education. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Rich.
Is this just so you have to give one less presentation to the board every year?
Absolutely.
Makes sense to me. No, this is great, and I know we've talked about it in the past, and has been brought up in committees and in board meetings year after year. Having it 50% and split is so important, especially because the impact it would have if we tried to collect all 100% at one time. That would just be such a burden on our community and our community members, especially those who are budgeting for the 50% every year. Even if we gave warning, it's just such a hard hit right all at once. So again, thank you so much and glad to see that this is a continuing.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions?
No further questions?
Elsa? Okay, thank you.
Next, we have our review of big package number 11 for Warner Middle School, the Farmington Early Childhood Center, and Farmington Central High School.
Thank you. Mr. John Barth, our Director of Facilities and Operations, is coming up. Good evening, board members, and Dr. Delgado. With me tonight, they need no introductions because they're here every time we do a bid pack, but is Aaron Phillips from McCarthy and Smith and Scott Smith from Plant Moran.
Real point, correct?
Real point. So we want to discuss, and thank you, Terry, for explaining what was a very long and difficult, shouldn't say difficult, but a long meeting to discuss all the ins and outs of Bid Pack 11. There's a lot that went into this thought-wise. It didn't start during that meeting. It started years ago, quite honestly. So Warner is a difficult animal because of the way it's designed. It's the only building that does not have a chiller. We talked about putting a chiller there. But to do that would have cost a huge amount of money that we couldn't afford. So we're actually replacing all the DX units on the roof, but that involves pulling off part of the roof to do that. So that all being said, we did our best to keep the budget in mind. However, you guys know what's happening out there with, it's not getting any better in terms of material supplies. So we had to figure all that in. But that being said, we did add a couple of alternates. We were able to add a couple of alternates that are very important to the district. So one of them is a new entrance at FHS, which is, it'll have a big monument sign out front, new secure entrance vestibule, a new outdoor classroom as part of that, sort of what I consider minimal cost in terms of bond work. So that was added, as well as some fans over at Warner. So those things were added after a lot of thought. A lot went into this. We were a little over budget, but that's okay because we're still well underneath the whole bond project dollars and cents. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron and Scott. Scott, I guess you'll start and talk about sort of the whole process involved, but very similar to what we've done in the past.
Thank you, John, and good evening. I'll keep my part pretty brief. I thought Ms. Weems and Mr. Barth did a great job explaining what we have. So this encompasses a total of four buildings, so predominantly at Warner Middle School, Farmington Central High School, a little bit at Farmington Early Childhood Center. And then, as Mr. Barth indicated, we have the alternate over at Farmington High School for the new front entranceway. What I thought would be most important, as we mentioned, we are over budget, but we've accumulated significant savings throughout this process, you know, leading up till now. And if you look back, we've really, this is the culmination of a lot of the actually classroom-type buildings. After this, we're really looking at support spaces and then potentially looking back at other areas of the district as well, depending on the funding available. But what I think is most important, or could be most confusing about this, is really the budget side of this. And I wanted to take a moment to just make sure everybody understood it here because it took a little bit of time to work through that at our committee meeting on Friday. But if you'll recall, this summer, we brought back to you guys in June a resolution to get going some long-lead mechanical equipment and some emergency generators that are still taking almost a year or potentially longer to get. All that equipment is onboard. We've ordered it. It's scheduled to be here next summer at this time. But what we did not do at that time is really give you any semblance of how that impacted the budget. So I will scroll to this page because I think it will be most helpful. But at that time, you guys, the board approved there we go, approximately $850,000 for that equipment. And the intention of that was to build that into the bids for this bid package. For the most part, we did that. What we're including separately here, if you see some of the items in red, those are the generators. So those are not included separately, but we wanted to account for them in the budget roll-up. And that plays into kind of the $715,000 overage on this bid package. So the total recommendation is just south of 8 million. But again, the board has actually taken action on roughly $850,000 of it previously. As far as the budget goes at Warner, Mr. Barth hit it right on the head. There's a lot of mechanical work there. It's difficult to access. We're literally taking parts of the roof off so we can get in there. We also are going to be replacing an additional unit that maybe wasn't initially contemplated, but is 20-plus years old. And because of the nature and the difficulty in accessing that area, we thought it would be silly to not target that unit, given its current age. So we added that to the scope. And also, part of the variance is about $250,000 is a bid alternate that John recommended for some fan-powered boxes over at Warner as well. That was additional work that was not originally contemplated until we got into the systems themselves. Farmington Central is targeting under budget. The large chunk of that is the exterior parking lot areas, as well as the addition of an emergency generator and some other interior improvements. And then, yeah, some questions might be on the Early Childhood Center. We obviously invested heavily in that in the previous bond. We even updated the finishes in the existing part of the building. But what we did not do was do a lot of the self-contained unit ventilators within the classrooms and the exterior caseworks. So the predominant function of this bid pack here is to go back and do that. So now the whole building will have an updated mechanical system within it. And then the other part, again, was the alternate number three, which was at Farmington Early Childhood Center. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron unless there are any specific questions about the budget. But I think Aaron can give us a little bit more detail on the specifics and how this whole recommendation went together. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, John. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Delgado. Generally speaking, it was a really good bid. We had 54 total bids. In comparison, that John and Scott spoke to the complexity of these projects, there's an abundant amount of work in the market right now for contractors and a very low labor. There's a labor shortage. So what we're seeing is when contractors look at projects, they're perhaps looking at projects that are easier or things that they can check off the box quicker. Warner Middle School is very complex, and that plays into the amount of bids we receive. So we received two bids. In comparison, when we look back at central office bid that was awarded a couple months ago, we received six. So there's some complexity there that's built into it. We still feel solid about the bids. Great contractors that we're recommending to you this evening. So I wanted to highlight that. Good news, bad news with this. The good news is we bid it when we did. In years past, I used to come to you in the January and February board meetings making these recommendations. It's, I always equate it to leaving for work earlier in rush hour. You seem to have to leave earlier and earlier. We're bidding projects earlier and earlier to try and beat the influx, try and get our projects bid out earlier, tag those projects for next summer, which is good. With these next round of bid packages that'll be coming before you, we're going to continue being strategic on the timing of those bids to make sure that we receive really, really solid, competitive, and numerous bids. So again, yeah, great bid turnout. Pleased to present it to you. So if there's any specific questions, I think we, John and Scott did a nice job on going over the detail. But if there's any questions, I'm definitely available to answer those.
Yes, Ms. Ira.
Well, I, first of all, I want to thank the community for the bond that they passed so that we can have this work done. And I apologize for not asking this at the committee meeting, but you said like for Warner because it was such a difficult job. We only had two bids, but they were reasonable. If the bids weren't reasonable, would you have postponed the work? So you know that they're within the scope of what we budgeted, and so they are reasonable to accept.
Absolutely, yeah. Great question. And that has happened before in the past. It happened a couple of times in the 2015 bond where we rejected the bids and rebid those. So if they don't fall within reason, that constitutes a rebid in our eyes. So we take that into consideration, take that into consideration, especially in our post-bid interviews where we interview those contractors. And both these two, they were within reason.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that our community understands the Farmington High School. You talked about that because I was there Saturday, and you're walking into the building that doesn't have a secure vestibule. And so maybe just kind of elaborate on why we're doing that in Farmington High School. And I actually, I was trying to picture where it was going to go and maybe, you know, to let the board know or just, I would like to see a more detailed diagram. I just want to kind of see how this is all going to fit together kind of thing. But just to kind of elaborate on why we're doing that work.
So the board's been nice enough to do a number of security infrastructure upgrades for the district, which is great. However, Farmington High School is the only building that does not have a secure vestibule, the only building. And you could argue it's the most susceptible to something happening, being on shywasi and the big front glass window and blah, blah, blah. So most of the students now enter through the attendance office. We, last year, facilities put in ADA accessibility in that doorway. So if you go off to the right as you're coming up through the archway, that's where most students go. However, the main entrance is those double doors where the big glass panel is in front, and very few people use that for a number of reasons. They want to go through attendance where the counselors are and whatnot. The main office is down the hallway, as you know. As you go westbound, it's halfway down the hallway. So the thought was, and Nathan at Wakeley and Brian at Wakeley designed what was a great solution in terms of utilizing that space, the main office, which is big. So they're going to put a secure vestibule inside what is now the main office. So there'll be an area where they can come into the building. There'll be a sidewalk out to the existing sidewalk where the loop is. There's also going to be a canopy archway, and I'll send the board the diagrams if you don't have it, that Nathan did. But anyway, so what's going to happen is it'll direct those visitors and some students through that main office. They need to go to the main office. However, most students will still go through the attendance office like they've always done. They just tend to go if they're going to the counselor or whatever they're going to do. But this gives a real entrance, which they don't really have right now because they're all drifting off to that attendance instead of going to the main front part. But the primary reason was there was no secure vestibule. So this gives a real vestibule. Again, the main office will remain where it is, but it'll have some delineation for visitors, for staff, for students who want to go through the main entrance. I mentioned before, there's big monuments, I think they're six or seven-foot-tall metal FHS letters, three-dimensional letters, that will be underneath this canopy overhang as you go toward the entrance. So you'll see it out front. It'll be lit from below. So it'll be a gorgeous new entrance. The archway that's there now will not be taken down. That's, you know, that's historic. So that's going to be an outdoor classroom. So a sidewalk that's thoroughly taken out, there'll be grass put there that's took them out of the building, but there's going to be shrubbery there. There'll be benches so they can have an outdoor space to learn and, you know, to meet and whatnot. It'll be really pretty, actually. So this will give real clear definition, and there'll be white wave-finding signs. So it'll be real clear definition as to where you go when you get to FHS, no confusion, but mostly because there'll be a secure vestibule.
Ms. Ben? Go ahead.
I appreciate all three of you, but I want to tell you thank you for the safety of what you're doing. Not only will it have the curve appeal, but it will also have the safety for the students and the staff. So, you know, I know it looks nice now on the inside, you know, with the chairs and all of that, but it's the safety issue that I really, really appreciate that all of you have put the thought in to do and for, not only for the students, but the staff too. So I appreciate you. You guys always do a great job, so thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Okay, it is now time for public comment. During the public comment portion of our board meeting, members of the community are welcome to address the board. Each community member will have up to three minutes to speak. A timer on the screen will display the three-minute countdown for each speaker during public comment. Thank you in advance for honoring this guideline. We wish to remind our community that this is a meeting of the board held in public to provide transparency, but this is not a public meeting. As a result, we will respectfully listen to your comments but will not respond or engage in dialogue with you in this venue. However, please be assured that we are listening closely to every comment and that a member of the Board of Education and/or our superintendent, Dr. Delgado, would be happy to speak with you after tonight's meeting to set up a time to engage in dialogue together and further address your concerns. If you would like to make public comment, there are cards on the table near the door. Please fill one out and bring it here to the Aqua Ceramic container near Mrs. Sterren. Thank you. Mr. Bill Lubaughay. Good evening.
Good evening. I have a handout for you, which you may or may not be able to read, but I decided to change my approach on these. And instead of going through a long description of what I was looking at, I decided I'd just go through and list the questions that I had so that we could address the questions and maybe get some answers. And the, most of the questions from slides two through six come from last meeting's spring 2023 state assessment, that 23-page document. So my first question is, how did Farming, how did the board lose 20% of kids while Farmington communities grew 5%? That's the first slide. And in effect, we had a market share way back in 2012 of 70%, and we ran it down to 52%. And no matter what the auditors say, if that happened to everybody else, we lost a significant market share here in Farmington. Why? My second point is, again, from your package, it says that M-step again flatlines in absence of educational plan. So in fact, our performance from year to year was flat. Is that a goal? That's certainly not what we intended. So what are the 23, 24 goals? Our relatively, and then our relatively flat county and state board or state broad trends are unstated goals. Again, that's from this package, and I included those points in here. Four and five raises the question about the Farmington school grades. We were a D average. We're comparing ourselves to Oakland County, which is a D average. The M-step opportunity gaps have existed for years between economically disadvantaged and African-American students as compared to all Farmington students. When will the four-member African-American majority of the board order Farmington schools to close these gaps? And then the seventh point is, has to do with comments. And the comment was made by a board member last time was, "I don't appreciate at all this constant untruth." That sure sounded like a defamatory comment to me.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Eugene Greenstein.
Good evening. We, the taxpayers, elect the school board to run our schools in a manner that provides the best education for our children. Just as the city councils work for the taxpayers, so does the school board. For the past eight or so years, measured by statewide testing, as previously stated over the past few meetings, our school's academic performance has been degrading such that FPS is no longer one of the best school systems in the state. The board has no goals or objectives to fix the situation, let alone fix the wide variation in performance between the individual schools and the system. We don't even have objectives to determine why we have these problems. We have been told the problem is the test, yet the tests are the same both within the system and within the state. We have been told that per the MASB, the board's job is not to set objectives for the schools, but for itself. Thus, this year, we will monitor school performance but not set expectations. This MASB approach has not worked for Michigan and not for FPS, yet we still follow it. Einstein said that the definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing over and over again while expecting different results. Clearly, that is not something a lifelong learner would do. A lifelong learner would be a problem solver. However, this board does not have any goals to solve problems. At the last meeting, Mrs. Weems was upset because the board was criticized during public comments. Although we appreciate Mrs. Weems' hard work and service to the community for the past eight years. eight years or so on the school board, we certainly are not happy with the results that we've seen. The taxpayers are the board's boss and not the other way around. I and others have made positive suggestion for changing FPS performance. In particular, I spent some six months educating myself on literacy and the ways to improve it. It's not fair to critique unless one's going to also put in the work. I was glad to see Phonics become part of the K-2 curriculum this year. Thank you for that. However, we have a long way to go. As this is the meeting of the board, we would appreciate seeing the board set meaningful objectives for FPS and take an active role in problem identification and the solution process. Are we lifelong learners or are we not? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Ms. Lori Tunic.
Good evening.
Good evening. Today, I come to you not as an MEA representative supporting Farmington staff, but as a member of the Farmington community. This past July, I'm so sorry. My family experienced the worst tragedy a family could experience. We tragically lost my nephew Simon, a North Farmington High School honor student at the age of 16 while on a camping trip in Alaska. Simon started his educational career at Alameda. He went to Kenbrook and then Warner and North Farmington High School, where he was planning to participate as a dual-enrolled student this year. I chair our story today to tell you how amazing the district and the staff have been to my family. Staff from Kenbrook to North Farmington High School and students came out in droves to support my family. Some came to remember Simon. Some came to support his sister Samantha, who is a student at Warner. The continued support with fundraising at North Farmington High School to honor Simon, the calls, the letters, the check-ins from staff and some members of this board have not been overlooked by my family. A special thank you to Joe Green and to the counseling staffer, including Simon's name on a recent ceremony at North Farmington High School. As a bit of time has passed, I cannot let go unnoticed how phenomenal the Farmington staff and this district are. A thank you on behalf of my entire family. This is an amazing district of caring educators who deserve total recognition.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas Hull.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to, um, first say, a lot of the, all the, um, my comments are not, um, it, it's more directed to the public, um, and also to the, um, to the board in general. Okay? As, uh, my, my position in the community, that I see a lot of stuff. I see a lot of stuff and I hear a lot of stuff. And, uh, and we have to, we have to protect our, protect our most vulnerable children. Our most, uh, what I heard from the last two weeks, actually longer than that, it, it totally, you know, as a father, as a community, it really broke my heart. You know, it's been in the paper, it's been in the news. And, uh, and I'm just so getting so sick of it. You know, I, I, I really am. And, uh, and everyone knows, knows, uh, knows me and, uh, and what I do for, uh, to help out this community as a, as a community member. And it, it just, it just, it just really bothers me that we need to, we need to end this. We need to end anything that has to do with any child getting hurt, any child getting, uh, discriminated against, any child that has, that has any kind of, uh, already put in a box before you didn't, you even see them, you know, prejudged. We, we have to, we have to start treating our, our kids, especially our kids of color, as, as scholars, as scholars, instead of, it's just, instead of just, you know, oh, wow, okay, what, what's, what they gonna do to, you know, disrupt my class or, or to lower, or to lower the expectations of, of a child of color. I, I, I come across so many times, which we, we have counselors, we have teachers that, that, that say, hey, instead of you taking AP classes or advanced classes, let's put you into this class because it's easier. And, and it's still going on. And I know, you know, we, we switched over a couple of board members and we, we have new superintendents during the thing, but the problems exist. We need to weed that stuff out. And I know you guys are, are on it. Um, yeah, I, I talk to you guys all the time. Again, this is for the public. This is for the, the existing staff and teachers, that we need to make a concerted effort, I mean, a deliberate effort to go ahead and start protecting these, these kids, uh, from harm, from, I mean, from the most heinous of heinous, um, harm. And, and start treating them like they're, 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 they're scholars and they're important members of this community. Other than that, that's, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kristi Yonkey.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, on Saturday, October 14th, the FEA held its seventh golf and social classic at Salem Hills Golf Club, where it was 43 degrees, rainy, and 20 mile-an-hour winds. That was, that was our second attempt because the original outing date was the morning after the thunderstorm that caused damage throughout, throughout the area. The previous six outings, on average, raised just over $3,000 to, for the FEA Scholarship Fund. Even though we didn't end up golfing, we raised $6,700, all of which will go to scholarships for high school seniors here in Farmington. I'd like to thank the family of Tom Shernowski. He is the former FEA president who we run this outing in honor of. They contributed. They didn't end up showing up to golf because of the weather, but I appreciate their support and the support of all of the sponsors and all of the golfers who showed up, even though we didn't leave the clubhouse. We are looking forward to this winter hosting our first event, um, honoring our artists and entertainers within the union. We are working with, um, one of our partners in JLP Financial, and we are hoping to have an art show in downtown Farmington this winter, featuring the talents of our FEA members. And it'll be open to the community to come visit and see what they can do on top of what they can teach. And again, we're hoping that all proceeds from that will also benefit the FEA Scholarship Fund. So, thanks to everyone who, uh, supported our golf outing. And when I have information, I will share it. I wanna thank Diane Baumann for helping promote our golf outing and district literature that got sent out. We appreciate that. Um, and last, just wanna wrap up by saying I appreciated hearing from Mr. Barth regarding the entrance at Farmington High School. I am very appreciative of it, and I know that the staff members there who, for the last few years, have been concerned about just sort of the awkwardness of the current setup and the fact that it was the only building that did not have that vestibule. And then we are excited to hear that it will, that it's being done in a way that'll actually capture some more classroom space. Um, it's just, it's a real win for the building and for the community. So, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Any additional public comment? Last call, any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Thank you. Moving on to our action items. Approval of the recommendation for the 2425 Section 105 Schools of Choice. Yes, Ms. Heinrich.
Um, yeah, this item was presented in detail at the October 10th, um, board meeting. Um, I move that the Board of Education approve Section 105 Limited Schools of Choice for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Motion by Ms. Heinrich, supported by Ms. Smith. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Next, approval of the summer tax collection resolution. Yes, Weems.
Uh, this item was also reviewed earlier in, um, uh, actually today versus the, the other one. I move that the Board of Education approve the summer tax collection resolution as presented and waive the reading of the resolution.
Support.
Uh, motion by Ms. Weems, supported by Mr. Rich. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, point of order, this is a roll call vote.
Roll call, okay. My apologies. Go ahead, Mr. Rich.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Weems?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
I myself am yes. Dr. Blau?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, finally, we have the approval of the recommended adoption policy updates, the June 2023 updates. This is our second. Ms. Weems?
Uh, yes, so as a reminder, this is our, uh, second review of this. We are putting this up for a motion today. Um, as a reminder, our attorneys provide two updates a year, one in the, in the summer, uh, another one sort of about winter. These recommendations were made to us over the summer. Uh, they are redlined for you, uh, all of the recommendations that were made by the attorney. Some of these are, are just legally required. Sometimes they are recommendations because they've received feedback that maybe there are some clarifications that were needed. And in other cases, they're making some recommendations just based off of what other districts have, um, come up with or, or suggested. Uh, so they do a lot of work across many, many districts. Uh, the policy committee reviewed these recommendations and in the margins have identified areas where we're going to either accept, uh, or reject, or amend some of the comments. So, in many cases, the policy committed, committee, um, accepted all of the recommendations, accepted many of the recommendations. And in other cases, we felt like the wording was already, uh, adequate and responsive because, again, our bylaws are a bit different than the bylaws that they're, um, reviewing in other areas. So, some of the recommendations they made to us were kind of canned, and we felt like our, uh, board policy had already established that. Uh, two things I wanna just bring to your attention. Uh, in one instance, we had some public comment that we wanted to be responsive to related to, um, developing an approach for a threat assessment. Uh, we originally, the committee felt like our policies were strong enough and that, you know, going into detail with respect to, uh, requiring, um, you know, uh, certain things like a, a specific threat assessment didn't belong in the policy itself, but could be represented in a, in a, uh, administrative regulation. But in response to the public comment that we received, we went ahead and made that change. So, that is one update that you'll see reflected here. We had another question from a board member about, um, a policy, oh, shoot, I had it up here, uh, on page 246 about, um, why an injury reporting form, uh, form was eliminated. And the rationale, again, was we didn't feel like forms and, and, and those types of detailed processes belonged in the policy itself, but rather in the administrative regulations. So, that was the rationale for taking out, um, you know, the, the, the district shall require this specific form to be written up. That should, uh, be, uh, addressed in an administrative regulation as opposed to a policy. Felt it was a little bit more restrictive. Plus, we actually had detailed conversation about that one. If someone, something happens to someone and then they move and run off, and we have no ability to follow up with them to actually submit a form, now we violated our policy. So, we actually had some conversation about that particular one and made the recommendation that we just take that out and leave the district to put that in an administrative regulation, should they choose. So, with that said, there's been one change made to the policy in response to the public comment that we got around safety, and we wanted to make sure that people continue to feel like our policies were robust in the safety realm, and so that change was made. So, with that, I will move, uh, that the Board of Education adopt the policy committee's recommendations as noted in the comments section of Miller Johnson's Policy Manual Update, June 14, 2023, as presented for the following policies. Policy 2006, Health and Safety, 3003, Homebound Instruction, 4004, Performance Evaluations, 4005, Mandatory Reporting, 5003, Federal Grants and Awards, 5013, Use of Electronic Signatures, 6002, Safety and Security, 7008, School Visitors, 7009, Engagement with Outside Organizations, 8002, Americans with Disability Act, ADA, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, 8008, Discrimination and Harassment, and finally, 8010 on Digital Communications.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Weems, supported by Mr. Rich. Is there any discussion? Yeah, yes, Ms.?
Um, the, uh, one policy where we talk about the, um, excuse me, cuz I'm really under the weather. Uh, the one where we talk about the evaluation or, can you let that be known that all of our board members are certified? We do have to take that class prior to, um, right after we are elected. So, all of us are already certified to do that evaluation. Um, so that should be known, that's for new board members that come aboard, not any of us because we all have had that class. You cannot do that, give a superintendent his or her evaluation unless you have completed that course. So, let's let the public know that. So, just in case somebody decides to vacate their office or position or somebody runs for a new position.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think you did a great job of, of covering that for the avoidance of doubt. You're, I think what you wanna make sure people understand is that that is, um, not a new policy, that all of us have already been certified, and so we're memorializing that in a policy so future board members, uh, will know that that is a requirement.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, uh, Ms. Smith and Ms. Weems. Any other discussion? All right. Uh, then let's go ahead and, and have our roll call vote.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Weems?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
I myself am a yes. Dr. Blau?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fantastic. Next, we have items from the treasurer. Expenditures.
I get all the long ones. I move that the Board of Education approve the expenditures as outlined in the expenditure printout dated October 24th, 2023 as follows, from the general fund, $11,217,110 from athletics, $195,302 from the 2018 bond fund, $986 from the 2020 bond fund, $4,506,493 from the nutrition services fund, $437,535, and from the benefit stabilization fund, $1,093,115, for a total of $17,450,541.
Motion by Ms. Weems, supported by Ms. Smith. Uh, any more discussion? All right. Uh, then let's go ahead with our roll call vote. Ready?
Voice vote.
Even though it's all so much? Okay. All right, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. One of these days, I'll get it right. Yeah, I, I printed out the agenda, but I didn't print out the motions. I'll look at that for next time. All right. Thank you all. Moving on to the consent agenda. Yes, Ms. Heinrich.
I move that the Board of Education approve the October 24th, 2023 consent agenda as follows. A, approval of minutes, October 10th, 2023 regular meeting, E, head start director's monthly report, C, personnel items, D, 2024 resolution compliance, PA 152, funded health insurance, E, security infrastructure upgrade, two-way radios.
Motion by Ms. Heinrich, supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Do we have any reports this evening from board representatives? I believe so. All right.
I'd like to.
Yes.
Can I? So I just want to remind everybody about the FAMPA N Tutoring Super Saturday Tutoring Program. The program is every Saturday from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. Our students are not attending at the rate that we have over the past several years, and so we are asking to make sure the students come for free tutoring on Saturdays. Want you to also know that we want you to bring your students, whether they need tutoring because they are not at grade level, or even because those students who are at grade level will be more than happy to help them accelerate. And please talk to parents who are Farmington and Farmington Hills, parents and students. We'd love to have them on Saturdays. And again, this is free. One of the ways that we are helping our kids to make sure that they are doing well. Thank you.
And we're, we're at the Farmington High School.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's at the Farmington High School right now.
Right in the media center. Yes. Thank you, Ms. Fox. I believe we are ready for adjournment. Ms. Heinrich?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Support.
A motion by Ms. Heinrich, supported by both Ms. Weems and Mr. Rich. And our meeting, oh, we have to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.